Okay, call the meeting order, please stand. The fight to lead is to defy the United States of America and truly public for standards, one nation for God, who is all who liberates us from fraud.
Okay, pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel were notified of this meeting, was posted in the municipal building and also on the township website. Is this thing like echoing yourself? No, sorry. Okay, Chrissy, roll call please.
Mr. Gaetano? Mr. Leo? Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Garofalo? Mr. De Cesare?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
Mr. Terrasca? Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Chairman Gravner?
Here.
Okay, in the absence of Mr. Leo, we will seat Andy Hamel and Mr. Gaetano should be here any second. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, Second Richard Iglesias, all in favor, I oppose, any abstentions?
I have an exception.
Jim Ketchum. Just wait a second, let me see. We have another member that should be here any minute now. We're just going to pause for one second. This way we don't have to go back. Okay, for the record, Anthony Gaetano's arrived, so he'll be seated as a regular member. Mike, all papers in order?
Yes, they are.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight is ZB 25-05, name of Citywide Holdings LLC. Would you please come forward? Is there an attorney or no?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Hi, my name is Ben Ozerkas, I'm an attorney with the law firm Cooper Levinson in PA. I'm here tonight on behalf of Citywide Holdings LLC, the applicant and the owner of 1785 Coles Mill Road, block 3801, lots 16 and 17. The two lots are located in the Franklinville Village District where single-family homes are permitted use. The applicant, Citywide Holdings, eventually wants to develop both of these lots to contain single-family homes. At this point, applicant is here before the board seeking variance relief for lot frontage where 99 feet of lot frontage is proposed and 100 is required. We believe that the variance request and the proposed development to the character of the neighborhood doesn't create any detriment to the neighborhood. A lot of the other properties on the block also have 99-foot frontages, so we think it conforms with the character of the neighborhood. Just to get ahead of some of the comments in the review letter, I brought some architectural elevations for you guys to look at. I can pass that around in a little bit. We looked into acquiring some of the neighboring parcels so you wouldn't have to seek variance relief, but just because of the size of them and how little land we needed, it wasn't really practical. And then, as far as the review letter, we sent the required NJDEP identification form to the DED earlier today. So today I have with me the esteemed Kyle Denny, the Principal of Basin Management Plus. Kyle's a licensed New Jersey engineer. He's going to be giving the variance justification testimony and getting into a little bit more of the specifics of our application, so...
We'll swear him in then.
Yeah.
Raise your right hand, please, swear tell truth about the testimony you're going to give.
I do. Kyle Denny, 10:00, Franklinville, New Jersey.
Is anyone else going to be giving testimony?
Uh, no, not tonight.
Okay.
So Kyle, your New Jersey license has been here, how do you touch side and requalify as an expert for this board or other boards of course?
Yes.
Can I move to have him talk?
Yes, he's been before our board several times.
Great. So Kyle, do you want to walk us through the application in advance?
Sure. As Ben mentioned, we're proposing to save time on homes and leave one on each lot. Variance is being requested for lot frontage, 100 feet is required where 99 is proposed, and just add to what Ben had indicated, acquiring additional land from our basin property would drive them into nonconformity, so it kind of doesn't make sense to take and then have to require somewhere else. All other criteria is met for these lots. Support for variance is provided.
My part of your variance is...
Thank you. Support for the variance is provided under C1 hardship. There is no room to acquire additional property and these are existing conditions before their existing lots. And with respect to C2, there's no substantial detriment to the public good and does not substantially impair the intent purpose of the zone plan. As Ben has mentioned, 83% of our street has 99 feet of frontage, which is matches to our lots, and for the entire block, it was 55% of the lots are nonconforming with respect to lot width.
Are there houses on all the other lots?
They are, every single lot is developed on the block.
So there's nothing to buy?
No, there is not. There's no room. And as I indicated, our whole, the whole block is 99 feet, all long Coles Mill. There's 100-foot lot that would be to our immediate right, lot 15, so if we got a foot from them to make one lot conforming, then that would be nonconforming. And these are well-inseptic properties. On my variance plan, I do show the proposed location of the wells and the septic. We meet all requirements for setbacks from property lines and from adjacent wells and adjacent septic systems. So the problem you would run into with lot lists is not being able to fit the septic and well on there without, you know, being, not meeting the setbacks, so we need all that requirement for meeting the side door setbacks or not exceeding impervious coverage. As I mentioned, this is an existing condition presented in front of us and it conforms with the neighborhood.
Dave, why don't you go through your report?
Thank you, Chairman. We did, and board members, we did a report dated April 17, 2025. These two parcels are in the Franklinville Village District, the district. We reviewed it for completeness and find that they meet all the technical aspects of the completeness checklist, so it's appropriate that they're here this evening. I agree with the testimony as presented by Mr. Denny and the product overview by Mr. Ozerkas. The really thing, the only thing that we're really addressing tonight is lot width. 100 foot is required, 99 feet is the existing width of both of these lots. So if variances are going to be granted, it's going to be for both lots, 16 and lot 17, two lots as part of this application this evening. Now, the Franklinville Village District has some interesting things contained within the regulations. One of the requirements is that the applicant shall be required to present architectural plans to the Architectural and Landscape Advisory Board prior to coming to this board. My understanding is that the Architecture and Landscape Advisory Board doesn't currently sit, so they couldn't do that. I hear that they brought architectural plans. If board members would like to take a look at that, that'd be appropriate for sure. The other thing, environmental requirements, we've been, you're required to submit to the DEP for any development in this area, and we heard testimony that that's been completed. My paragraph four references a requirement in this zone that 25% of the lot be landscaped. So we would request that the applicant put some testimony on the record this evening about the landscaping or wooded areas that are going to remain. We heard that there were, we heard that there was attempts to buy additional frontage for adjoining, but it just makes the adjoining lots nonconforming, so that really should not be an issue with this particular application. And any approval if granted tonight will be subject to finalized grading plans by the municipal engineer. So landscaping plans perhaps and landscaping, I mean architectural plans and landscaping.
And there's no architectural or landscape advisory board anymore, or is that what you said?
That's what I heard.
Okay. Is our elevation of the proposed lot home?
Sure.
Do you have another one?
I only brought three counties.
Oh, we're good, we're good. Yeah, we have plenty.
So if you could touch briefly on, do we meet that criteria where 25% of our lot will be landscaped and/or retained woods?
Yeah, so currently what's proposed is 9.5% impervious, which means 95% of the rest of the lot has impervious area. So your front yard area will be grassed with landscaping around the foundation, typical of a residential structure, and any wooded areas that do not need to be removed for the well or the septic would are proposed to be remaining, which would be indicated on my grading plan and also on the septic plans that would be submitted.
Very good. So, I mean, would you look at the landscape that they submitted the plan to some sort date?
No, I would not.
But the township engineer would?
Right, he'd look at that 25%.
Well, then that's what you'll have to do.
I mean, right, I would answer, at least 40%, and my understanding is grass would apply for landscaping. Or they look at...
That you'd have to ask that. I'm sorry, as far as the environmental permit, I'm just checking with Dave to see if actually was something you've seen or did you see?
Yeah, we submitted that earlier today, I can't give Dave, but I can send you a copy as well.
Okay. When you send the PDF of the A1, could you get it to the secretary so it's of record?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you can send it.
Thank you. Just have one question. Just to clarify, regarding the attempt to acquire adjoining properties, sounds like you actually did not do that because it really wasn't practical to do it. Did you send the letters out, ask some people to do that? You didn't actually send letters out, ask some people to buy or sell?
We didn't actually communicate with any landowner, engage negotiations, we just kind of looked at the size of our lots and the size of the neighboring lots, and because they weren't oversized and had kind of land to spare that they could give us to bring us into conformity, it didn't necessarily make sense to make them nonconforming or push their nonconformity greater, just acquire a foot of land for our lot.
Now, is each, each lot adjoining you is developed from a house?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are not vacants for the...
Correct.
All right, let's make a motion to open up to the public.
I second that.
Two seconds. Sorry, by Anthony Gaetano, all in favor, I oppose. Anyone from the public, I see her regarding this application, please come forward if so. Raise your right hand, please, swear tell truth about the testimony you're going to give. State your name and address, please.
My name is Candace Colburn, but I live on 331 Blackwood Avenue. My parents lived on 1819 Coles Mill Road, so they are on the opposite side of Harrison Avenue. My mother was unable to attend. Some of her questions and concerns were that the property that once had one house will now have three homes. That, granted, it says that they need 100 feet, but they only have 99 feet, and again, our concern is there has to be rules, there has to be a cutoff somewhere, and the rule is 100 feet. We did look, and it says that there is enough room for house, well, and septic. One of the concerns is maybe lack of parking. I know there's been some construction on Harrison Avenue and Fisher, which seems like one road, but it does cause people to then be parking on other people's property. I think they say an open side yard, which my parents have, for wooded property, and they feel that is inaccessible to park. I know one of our other neighbors, they park on her sprinkler system, so that's a concern about people parking on property when they don't quite have enough property, particularly road frontage. And, let's see. Oh, and then also to work on, say, the septic, I see that the septic is in the front and the well is in the back, would they have enough room to then work on the property without then imposing on the neighbor's property? So that was some of the concerns that my mother had.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else I'd be heard? If not, we'll go to the public portion. Motion by Dana De Cesare, Second Richard Iglesias, all in favor, I oppose. Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? I mean, there's 12 lots here that are all 99 feet with homes on.
It's the neighborhood.
Right?
It's the neighborhood. It matches.
And regarding the residents' concern about the construction, I mean, the zoning board has nothing to do with enforcing anybody's actual construction process when they're building, but by all means, if there's a construction company parking vehicles on a neighboring property, you should call the police and that's, you know, I would do the same thing if they were, you know, if a construction company parked on my property, even six inches on my property, I would call the cops.
If you have an existing home, though, I'm talking about in the family road, they already need septic or well, they may then park on the neighbor's property.
I just don't want to see your parents' property be infringed upon because someone else has built the house, so make sure you alert the authorities if there's a problem.
They are only, they are the road that's between that property.
Very good. So there's a mention about three houses on this two. There's only two homes going up, not three.
No, but what I'm saying is the property at one time had one home on it, and now it's going, it has got some on it and score part of the property, and then there are two more lots. So I'm just saying that at one point, that property had one home and now it's going to have three. I understand that you're only getting super now.
That doesn't really look like that's the way it was.
So there was one existing property there, we're removing that, we're getting variance relief, and then we'll build one house on each lot, so it'll be two of them.
I think you're referring to the adjacent property of somebody else.
No, I'm hoping that at one point, here, I'm going way back, when the water over that property, it was one piece of property. It was many years ago.
But the property has since been subdivided.
Correct.
And we have these two existing lots that are each 99-foot wide, so that's kind of what we're dealing with.
Was it subdivided, how many years ago was that subdivided? That's got to be...
Is it really relevant to this application?
Probably one of those, well, lots remain.
Okay. So, Mr. Gentleman, your adjacent, your adjacent...
Yes. My name is Ben Denny, I'm 33 Harrison Avenue. My question is, at one time, you heard me go on a wonderful conversation, somebody said at one time there was a minimum amount of acreage needed to own before you could build a house on a lot or something like that. I don't know if that still exists or not.
It does. He meets all the criteria, but the front yard.
Yeah, so in this zone, you need 30,000 square foot for one house, and these lots are over 41,000. And it meets all the side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. The only thing it doesn't meet is the one foot of lot width.
Are you going to give up one and come back for the board?
Thank you, sir. Heard the testimony. Anyone have questions from the board? The, with public portion is closed. But the public portion, we closed already. You had an opportunity to speak. Can we open it up again?
You can. Yeah, I'm, your fair misunderstanding.
All right. I make the motion, we open public portion.
I second that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Motion by Dana, Second. All in favor, I oppose. Okay.
I found out just, I want to know, I just want to know how far it's going to be off the T, the T off the Coles Mill Road, because I have nothing, I live...
Kyle, how far is the house going to be off of Coles Mill Road?
It's going to be 95. 95 feet.
95 feet wide, because when I get out my driveway until this time, it's, it's a pain in the neck, it's a hill, and it's dangerous, but I didn't want that to be real close to blocking my hands, but it's going to be 90 feet, so that's going to be...
Okay. Very good. Okay, okay. The motion by De Cesare. Close her up. I make the motion, we close the public portion.
I second.
Motion by Dana, Second by Rich, all in favor, I oppose. Okay. You heard the testimony. With your pleasure, gentlemen.
I make a motion, we approve. I second that.
Motion by Dana, Second by Rich, all in favor, I oppose. Okay. You heard the testimony. With your pleasure, gentlemen.
I make a motion, we approve. I second that.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, Second by Anthony Gaetano. Chrissy, roll call.
Mr. Gaetano?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes, I just want to say that this will fit in with the rest of the neighborhood so we're not hurting.
And Chairman Gravner?
Yes. Okay. Application approved. ZB, next on our agenda, ZB 25-04, name is Stephen Cox. Mr. Cox, please go forward. Mike, everything in order?
Notice was properly given, yes.
Raise your right hand, please, swear tell truth about testimony you're going to give. Name and address, please.
Stephen Cox, 2277 North Blue Bell Road, New Field, New Jersey, 34.
Speak into the, yeah, speak into the microphone.
Stephen Cox, 2277 North Blue Bell Road in New Field, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Cox, what are you, what are you proposing?
I'm looking to get variance for, first, a private garage, my property that's larger than the township definition of private garages.
You and a lot of people.
That's a nice lot. So if you're looking at the survey there, you'll see I have a meat of the criteria for setbacks. I have a backup to a farm, and I have 100-foot agricultural buffer that we're maintaining there, and the side door clearance with a minimum of 20, you know, 1032 there.
So you want to build the big building way in the back, I see, right?
Yeah, I have a farm, like I said, a poor farm behind me that's a farm laid preserved, so I have the neighbors back there, and we all back up to that farm.
A lot of things happening on that property there, I could see.
We got wood, yeah, but our lot coverage is, we're still good on the, we're under the lot coverage. We don't need a lot of wood percentage.
Yeah, so we're going to go through our engineer's report, and I think you should...
Yeah.
Dave, you're on.
Thank you. Our report was dated April 17, 2025. As indicated by Mr. Cox, the applicant is proposing to construct a garage 40-foot by 55 feet with a 12-foot by 35-foot covered entrance. We're in the Pine Lands Rural Residential District. The lot meets the lot size requirements of 3.4 acres, the street frontage is good, the setback is good, the rear yard setback, the side yard setback, all meets the requirements of this district. There's two variances that are required for this application this evening. One is maximum garage area. Our ordinance allows 1,200 square feet. The applicant is proposing 2,620 square feet. The second relief that's requested is height. The maximum height for an accessory structure is 15 feet, and this one is 19 feet 6 inches. Those are the two things that relief is required for this evening.
I don't even think you're going to see it from the road.
And what is the proposed use for this garage?
Just a personal use. I have a boat with a hardtop on it, I know that I can park in there, and then the garage is 12-foot door. I like park my truck in there, tractor in there.
This for personal use only, not for commercial use? You're not going to fill swimming pools, are you?
I'm not going to. No.
How are you going to get back to it?
What's that?
How are you going to get back to it? You're going to put a driveway in?
Yeah, I'm going to extend my driveway to, if you have a copy of the survey, my driveway stops, I'm just going to extend my driveway around.
You want to make it bigger, my driveway?
No, the garage.
No.
Sure. Oh, if I can, yeah.
You never have enough room.
Never have enough room. That's until we build in two days.
I didn't want to break my leg if I made a mistake.
Push it, push it.
You're already the personal, not commercial use. When you're in Pine Lands, you have to really make sure you're...
No, that's, that's true.
Because if not, the Pine Lands will make your life...
That's actually the reason, but you're not allowed to go bigger than the principal structure or whatever, so...
As far as the personal versus commercial use, if you start doing anything out of there that's not personal, the Pine Lands will...
Oh, I see.
Will make your life very miserable.
No, but you're correct, too, with size.
Yeah.
Right, so it has to be an accessory use, and it has to be accessory in size to the principal dwelling. So having a gigantic mul barn and a teeny tiny little house is a difficult thing in life.
So, anything else?
What's your number two here?
Variance relief has been requested by the applicant on this number two, 25-156.
Three-vehicle situation, it says.
That's how the definition is, I think, is written in your guys' photo book, maximum of three vehicles.
Is that sound?
Yeah, that's how it's written, yeah. Yeah.
So given the size of this, it can accommodate more than three vehicles.
Yeah.
So that also is relief that's requested, part of this. So it's three parts. Size of building, height of building, and more than three cars.
Okay.
That's a relief that should be granted by the board if they accept the application there.
Anything else, Dave?
That's all I have, pretty straightforward.
Okay, let's open it up to the public.
I make a motion, we approve.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, Second by Anthony Gaetano, all in favor, I oppose. Anyone from the public I'd be heard regarding this? The mayor wants to come on? Please welcome.
I make a motion, close. I second that.
Motion by Anthony Gaetano, to close. Public portion is second by Dana De Cesare. All in favor, I oppose. Okay.
I make a motion, approve the variance for his garage.
Motion by Mr. De Cesare on...
I second that, just for urban businesses.
Second by Anthony Gaetano, Chrissy Rolcall.
Mr. Gaetano?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes, another project that won't hurt the...
Chairman Gravner?
Yes, like I said before, you won't even see it, no one will even know it's there. Okay. That's it for our agenda tonight. Resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution. I second it. I guess they drafted them, they're okay.
Okay.
We approved them last week, didn't we?
Yeah, a motion by Dana De Cesare, Second by Richard Iglesias. All in favor, I oppose. Abstentions? Secretary's report, is there nothing? Any report from our engineer or from our attorney for anything? No, nothing tonight? Nothing tonight? Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we approve.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, Second by Anthony Gaetano, all in favor.
I approve.
Ciao.
Ciao.
in there, and then park a 12-foot door, I'd like to park my truck in there, tractor in there.
This for personal use only, not for commercial use? And not gonna fill swimming pools, are ya?
I'm not gonna. No.
How you gonna get back to it?
What's that?
How you gonna get back to it? You gonna put a driveway in?
Yeah, I'm gonna extend my driveway to, if you have a copy of the survey, my driveway stops, I'm just gonna extend my driveway around. You wanna make it bigger, my driveway? No, the garage. Sure. Oh, and my can, yeah.
Never have enough room.
Never have enough room. That's until we build in two days. Push it, push it.
You're already the personal, not commercial use, when you're in Pylands, you have to really make sure you're...
No, that, that, that's true.
Because if not, the Pylands will make your life...
That was, that's actually the reason, but you're not allowed to go bigger than the principal structure or whatever, so.
As far as the personal versus commercial use, if you start doing anything out of there that's not personal, the Pylands will...
Oh, I see.
Will make sure your life, your life is...
No, but you're correct too with size.
Yeah.
Right, so it has to be an accessory use, and it has to be accessory in size to the principal block. So having a gigantic home barn and a teeny-tiny little house is a difficult thing to find.
So, anything else?
What's your number two here?
Variance relief has been requested by the applicant on this number two, 25-156.
Three-vehicle situation, it says.
That's how the definition is, I think is written in your guy's code book, maximum of three vehicles. Is that sound? Yeah, that's how it's written, yeah. Yeah.
So given the size of this, it can accommodate more than three vehicles. So, so that also is relief that's requested. So, it's three parts. Size of building, height of building, and more than three cars.
Okay.
That's a relief that should be granted by the board if they accept the application here.
Anything else, Dave?
That's all I have, pretty straightforward.
Okay, let's open it up to the public.
I make a motion to approve. I second that.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, seconded by Anthony Gaitano, all in favor, I oppose. Anyone from the public that should be heard regarding this? The mayor wants to come up? He's welcome.
I second that.
Motion by Anthony Gaitano to close, public portion seconded by Dana De Cesare. All in favor, I oppose. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the variance for his drive.
Motion by Mr. De Cesare on...
I second that, just for our window businesses.
Seconded by Anthony Gaitano, Chrissy Rokoff.
Mr. Gaitano?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes, another project that won't hurt the...
Chairman Gravener?
Yes, like I said before, you won't even see it, no one will even know it's there. Okay, approved.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for our agenda tonight. Resolution. I second. I guess they've gotten them, they're okay, okay.
We approved them last week, Henry.
Yeah, a motion by Dana De Cesare, seconded by Richard Iglesias. All in favor, I oppose. Abstentions? Secretary's report is through, nothing? Any report from our engineer or from our attorney for anything? No. Nothing tonight? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Dana De Cesare, seconded by Anthony Gaitano. All in favor, I oppose.